Hello, I would like to call the Municipal Planning Commission Regular Meeting October 14, 2014 at 7:03 PM to order. First item on the agenda is the prayer and the pledge. And Mr. Rowe, would you say the prayer for us, please?
Father God, we come to you tonight to do the work of the city. And Father, as the Planning Commission of the City of Fairview, and Father, we just ask for your wisdom and your guidance that would be imparted unto us to make decisions that would be in the best interest of the city and that it would be pleasing to you, Father. And we just ask you to bless all the citizens in Fairview and to give everybody favor with each other, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is approval of the agenda.
Moved approved.
Move a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Number three, citizens' comments. We have one, Ms. Linda Waters. Please come forward. Welcome.
Thank you. What's the time, the only one, can I have six minutes? Okay, my question, we're wanting to know what's going in there on the rezoning on Cox Pike. We're residents of Western Woods and all of us are extremely upset about it. Can you tell us what the plans are to go in there, what they're gonna build or whatever once that's rezoned?
There are no plans at this time, it's just being rezoned.
Well, they've all got signs in their yard that says, "Request rezoning."
I think, like, the comments are for you to be able to make your comments, but I don't think it's a question and answer time.
Okay, well, we're just all want to oppose it. I don't know how we go about voicing our opinions of it, but we're worried about the traffic, you know, Cox Pike is really bad anyway. And then if you put more apartments or stores in there, is there a plan to widen the road or?
When the rezoning comes up on the agenda, I'm sure there will be plenty of discussion. We have several items on the agenda.
Okay.
We'll make sure that we discuss that thoroughly.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Item four is approval of the minutes, 4.1, September 9, 2014, regular meeting.
Moved approved.
We have a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Number five, recommendations, there are none. Number six, bonds. 6.1 is Leverett Meadows Subdivision Phase Two, letter of credit to cover the road, sidewalks, and storm drainage in the amount of $78,700. Letter of credit expires October 31, 2014. Mr. Humber is very ill tonight, he was not able to attend our meeting, and I would just like to say that this has been authorized to be called already.
I'd like to recuse myself from voting on this, Adam.
Move the call of bond on October 31, if not picked up.
Second.
This board has already authorized that.
Right, it's already been authorized to be called.
They authorized Leverett Meadows Phase One, and the owner has renewed that one. You authorized the calling of Walmart spoils. We called that bond and got the money, it was, I think it was, my memory is correct, it was on the 7th, and that's already been done. And this one has been authorized in a previous vote, and if they don't renew it before October 31, we will call that one also.
So we've already taken care of 6.2 also?
No, sir, they have not, but what I suggested to the chairman on those, they are not, they don't expire until November 30, 6.2 and 6.3, we'll have another meeting before then. And also, in reading the engineer's comments, I would like for the board to consider author out, or requesting Mr. Hall to have the city engineer reassess 6.2 and 6.3 prior to November 15, so we'll have time to call them. But at this point, we don't know if they have accomplished anything on these or not, and we also would not know if they have, what amount it would be reduced to. So I request the board to recommend to Mr. Hall that he authorize city engineer to reevaluate those prior to the November meeting, I said the 15th, but prior to the November meeting, I don't know what date that'll be on, but prior to the November meeting would be sufficient to request. And I just asked Will, he said he could get it done by the next meeting, and we can get it called if necessary before then.
The motion would be to defer to the first meeting in November from the Planning Commission time for the engineer to revise, reassess the situation, and at that time, if it's not completed, move forward with the calling of the bond.
Right, and if it's completed, we release it. If it's not completed, if three-fourths of it's completed, then we reduce the bond.
That'd be my motion, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor? I didn't ask for any discussion, would anybody like to discuss that?
I'd like one clarification.
Okay.
You said one bond had been paid?
That's correct, the Walmart spoils site, they virtually, Will did reassess that, and you can speak for yourself, but they had accomplished virtually nothing, so we called that bond. And my memory is it expired on the 8th, we called it on the 7th because the bond had a little bit of an unusual, the letter of credit, I'm sorry, I'm referring to as bond as letter of credit, had a little bit of an unusual statement in it. It said it expired at 12:01 AM on the 8th, which meant, one minute after midnight, which meant we had to be there the day before.
I just wanted to add some clarification, there were two or three other things going on right now to make sure I had it right.
This is where you and Wayne went up, was it Wilson County where?
No, this is Portland.
Portland, and they took care of it right away.
Yeah, and they paid the, they gave us cashier's check, turned it over to the CFO, and he put it in a separate account, it's in the bank. We'll have to bid for completion, and it'll have to be run for 30 days, and the normal bidding process.
That's correct. A little bit of feedback tonight. Items 6.2 and 6.3 are independent of the spoils site letter of credit that was called. And also, just as a refresher, 6.2 and 6.3 both, even if at the next meeting it's determined that all punch list items have been completed, your subdivision regulations call for those bonds to be converted over to one-year maintenance bonds. So you'll have a one-year maintenance, at the time when it's converted over, and if that happens to be next month, then they both will convert over to one-year maintenance bonds. In the case of the subdivision bond that would include the new roadways and the new streetlights, that maintenance bond would be for the purposes of making sure that the roads and the gutter, curb and gutter, and the streetlights and all those facets of the improvement are maintained and are kept in working order for one year after accepting them. And then for the site bond that would be converted to a maintenance bond, that ensures that there's, the city has some leverage on primarily landscape elements that may not make it through the winter and then would need to be replaced. So if the owner fails to replace those, then that maintenance bond would cover the costs of making sure that that was done. So just as a refresher on bonds and letters of credit and kind of what the city requires in these instances, that's what we'd be looking for, for both of these in the near future.
Just one other statement of clarification, the Walmart spoils site has nothing to do with Walmart, it's a separate entity type thing. It was just called Walmart spoils because the dirt came from the original site.
Okay, we have a first and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, old business, 7.1, final plat for Phase One and Phase Two, Deer Valley Downs, RS40 map 46 parcel 17.00, Tony Cavender owner. Mr. Beata, would you like to read the engineer's comments, please?
Sure. Okay, this is a letter from our engineer, Will Owen, to the property owner and I believe his engineer. The revised road profile for Deer Valley Drive that is shown on sheet 3.1 appears to be in good order. The only remaining item regarding the construction plan approval is the drainage calculations and the review comments for those are at the end of this email. Based on the discussions that took place at the staff meeting last Wednesday, I offer the following suggested procedural tasks for moving forward with the Deer Valley Downs subdivision. Number one, final plat for Phase One A lots 1, 4, and 5 have been approved by the PC subject to the addition of a 15-foot sidewalk easement. That easement has been added and the revised plat was submitted directly to City Hall by the surveyor. The owner will need to provide one Mylar copy and six paper copies with all signatures to City Hall for the purpose of having the plat recorded at the county registrar's office. Please contact the planning department if there are any specific questions regarding this. Number two, obtain construction plans and drainage calculation approval from city planning and engineering for Phase One B and Phase Two. Per meeting discussions, WADC indicated there were some adjustments that needed to occur to the construction plans pertaining to the proposed sanitary sewer service to lots 1, 4, and 5, with regards to there being conflicting plans between the Phase One A plat and the Phase One B-Phase Two construction plans. As far as any remaining city concerns pertaining to the construction plans, please see drainage calculation comments below. Number three, city planning department is to draft a development agreement for the owner to review and execute. Number four, owner developer is to submit a final plat for Phase One B and Phase Two, the plat is to include an open space management plan on the plat for review by the planning commission. Number five, the owner developer is to submit copy of the drafted community association documents, i.e. covenants and restrictions and HOA incorporation, to city planning department. Number six, city engineer is to develop an estimate amount for the required performance bond to present to the PC at the time they review the Phase One B-Phase Two final plat. Number seven, upon completion and satisfactory submittal, the owner developer to check with city planning department for the next submittal deadline. Of items 2 through 5, the final plat and all associated documents are to be placed on a meeting agenda of the planning commission. Number eight, after review and approval of the Phase One B Phase Two final plat, the performance bond will need to be posted in the approved amount along with a bond and associated agreement with WADC. Final drafts of all community association documents will need to be recorded in the county registrar's office, and owner is to provide six paper copies and one Mylar copy of the approved plat with signatures to the city planning department for the final plat to be recorded in the registrar's office. Further, it says, "Please see below comments regarding the drainage calculations for Deer Valley Downs," and this is 1 through 4. Number one.
Commissioner Beata, if I will.
Yeah.
You're welcome to read all of the technical review comments on the drainage calculations if the planning commission desires, but this correspondence was specifically from me to not only developer but Mr. Humber, as well as the developer's engineer, on trying to clearly and concisely lay out an approval plan to move forward with this development. As most of you know, this has been a development that has squandered around for several months, and it was my effort to provide a clear path that was in accordance with your subregs on the exact steps that needed to take place. What's been presented to you tonight, as I understand it, tonight's my first opportunity to take a look at it, is item number four, which Mr. Beata just read, the final plat for Phase One B and Phase Two, which is what's coming before you tonight. Item number one, the final plat for Phase One A, that's already been done, that's been approved, it's just clerical procedures that need to take place so that it can be signed and recorded. This body had reviewed that and approved that Phase One A plat, I don't have the exact month, but several months ago. Construction plans are, in my estimation, around 98% complete. We've had several back-and-forth revisions of those construction plans. There were some remaining factors with the drainage calculations, which is what Mr. Beata was about to get into, that still needed to be revised, and to date, I have not received any revisions of those drainage calculations that are associated with the construction plans. I am uncertain if the planning department has drafted a development agreement. Mr. Cavender's here, he may be aware if that development agreement has been provided to him, and Mike could weigh in on that. Number four, as I said, is before you tonight. Number five, it's my understanding that these documents, the community association documents, have been drafted, I am uncertain if they have been recorded, and I have not seen a copy of those documents. Number six, I am prepared tonight to give a bond amount if you desire to move forward in that direction. And then number seven is kind of the summary of where we need to be at this stage and what documents should be submitted to the city for final review and approval of the plat that's before you. I can tell you, in looking at the plat just a few minutes before the meeting that I had, there are, I believe, seven lots that are still shown below the minimum area requirement, which is 8,000 square feet. There are seven lots that are less than that, that would certainly need to be revised. In my estimation, that can be done fairly simply by adjusting some property lines with neighboring lots that are greater than 8,000 square feet, but it is something that would need to be done. The stormwater infrastructure that's shown on this plat does not match what has been submitted on the construction plans, that would need to be revised. I believe that the sanitary sewer that's shown on the plat, I think that it is slightly different than what the construction plans show as well, but I can't confirm that without having the construction plans in front of me. Those are the primary issues that I see with the plat that still need to be corrected. You have the option of approving contingent upon those corrections if you so desire, you can certainly move in that direction, but it would be up to your discretion.
Well, just hoping for questions, if I can, I'll move to approval to get to discussions.
Second. We have a motion for approval and a second, any discussion?
This is supposed to be the final plat, correct? But there's a lot of changes that's going to have to be made on here.
Yeah, there's, as Mr. Owen was talking, speaking about the square footage on the lots, there are seven, and there are, you know, that's can be fixed probably, I'd say probably within a couple of days, I can get Kenneth Carroll to fix that. That actually was supposed to be already taking place and done, it just was oversight. When I looked at it, actually, Will just brought it to my attention as well, but that's something we can fix, just within, should be able to get, you know, get that replaced within a couple of days. And I do have the stamped approved plans from the WADC, from the construction plans already, I picked those up, they're actually with me as well, so now I can't confirm, either way, if they match what's on the plat, I can just make sure that it does, when, I can take a copy of that to Kenneth Carroll to make sure they do match. But if we can, if we can approve it the way, you know, approve it with those changes, I can make sure we can get those done.
Are you gonna have enough room to move over on Lot 9 off of 10, 11, and 12, took correct o's and out of Phase Three on Lot 13?
Yes.
And then where are we gonna pick it up at on 36?
I don't have it, I don't have a cop in front of me, but Will, can you?
You got your Mylar copy up there. You should have a Mylar copy. It looks like it's gonna take a lot of shifting on a lot of lots to be able to accommodate it, because some of the ones that we're looking at here are bordered by things that are just Example, Lot 3130 sitting dead on 8,000, so you can't take it from there, you can't take it from 32, you're gonna have to come all the way back over to 34 to pick up any of those.
They'll have to be shifted down, you're right, they'll have to be shifted down, all those will have to be, you know, shifted somewhat to pick up the square footage.
Well, a little question for you then, should we defer this, should we approve it with the pending request that the engineer's made? Because, like I said, it's a lot of work, there still needs to be, we're not close to a final plat it looks like with the 8,000 square foot requirements, so I'm asking you, Larry.
Well, that's, that's, this planning commission's call, if you want to approve it contingent upon all the changes being made, you can do that. With that many changes, I would suggest, there's nothing wrong with you doing that, but I would defer it to the next meeting and let them have the changes brought in here, because that's an awful lot of changes.
It is, I'm not, just looking at it that way, where are you gonna have to get it from, it's not like one, one or two lots can be fixed, you're gonna do a lot of shifting around there. With that, I'd make a motion that we defer to the next meeting and opportunity to get the final plat approved with recommendations from the city engineer.
You'll have to withdraw your first motion.
I'll withdraw my first motion and make that motion.
Somebody needs to withdraw their second.
I withdraw my second.
Now you can make your.
Okay, I make a motion, we defer to the next meeting so we make the proper corrections on the final plat that's being submitted to us tonight to concur with the city engineer's wishes and desires.
Okay, we have a motion to defer and a second, any more discussion?
Just, this is a matter of self-defense, and I'm, I don't think you meant it this way, but my desires are the desires of your subregs, they're not my personal desires based on what I desire to see, so just wanted to make that clarification.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number eight, new business, 8.1, rezoning application for property located at 7151 Cox Pike from RS40 Residential to TCOD Town Center Overlay District without designation, map 42H parcel 3.00, 1.28 acres, Elton C. and Deborah L. Hall owners.
They're here tonight?
Do we have anyone representing? Okay, welcome.
Thank you. We had just requested rezoning for, well, we'd come and talked to some of the city officials and since that's inside the civic center, they felt like it would be good to have it rezoned into the civic center overlay, not as, as far as I know, not as any particular, it's just not a particular plan for it in any way at all. They just felt like if we zoned it at that, it would just better, we're thinking about probably selling some of it, and we just want to get, you know, get the zoning put to where it can be rezoned, just whatever people needed to use it for, whether it be some type of residential or where it be for commercial or whatever it might be.
Okay, so I'm just helping along, the answer for the lady's question earlier was, you just doing a?
Yeah, there's not a plan.
You're trying to just get it rezoned for future use sometimes, you don't have a contract or anything on it?
No, no.
This particular property does fall in our city's.
Town Center Overlay District, it does, all of these do.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
We have a first and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
8.2, rezoning application for property located at 7119 Cox Pike from RS40 Residential to TCOD Town Center Overlay District without designation, map 42HC parcel 4.00, .58 acres, Elton C. and Deborah L. Hall owners.
Moved approved.
Same, same situation.
We have a first and a second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 8.2 passes. 8.3, rezoning application for property located at 7114 Wally Circle from RS40 Residential to TCOD Town Center Overlay District without designation, map 42HC parcel 1.00, .5 acres, Roger and Debbie Lampley owners.
Yes, it's my sister and brother-in-law.
Okay, they'll need to.
They're here, you need them up here.
He said he was gonna make you come up, anyone.
We're all together, you know, it's the same, just a big old piece of property. And, you know, we were just, we don't have any plans, nobody, you know, to build anything special, it's just for the, without designation, for the Town Center Overlay District, we want to rezonate to that.
Moved approved.
Second.
We have a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 8.3 passes. 8.4, rezoning application for property located at 7112 Wally Circle from RS40 Residential to TCOD Town Center Overlay District without designation, map 42HC parcel 2.00, 1.00 acres, Roger and Debbie Lampley owners.
That's me, too.
That's me, too.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 8.4 passes. 8.5, rezoning application for property located at 7159 Cox Pike from RS40 Residential to TCOD Town Center Overlay District without designation, map 42HC, parcel 2.02, 1.25 acres, Roger and Debbie Lamplie owners.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 8.5 passes. 8.6, rezoning application for property located at 7161 Cox Pike, RS40 Residential to TCOD Town Center Overlay District without designation, map 42HC, parcel 2.01, .62 acres, Richard W. McCord and Denise R. McCord owners.
I'll have to speak for them, if it's okay. Can I do that?
You're their representative tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, this is the same, it's the same situation, it's, uh, there's no plan for that, it's all, it's all together, like, every bit of this is all under the same blanket, more or less. We just want to get it rezoned to the Town Center Overlay.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 8.6 passes. 8.7, rezoning application for property located at 7169 Cox Pike, RS40 Residential to TCOD Town Center Overlay District without designation, map 42, parcel 179, 1.3 acres, Margie Lee McCord owner.
That's my sister. She just asked me to come and just represent her, too. She's, it's the same situation.
That's fine.
All the same requests.
Move to approve.
Second.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, sorry. We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 8.7 passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. 8.8, explain the independent investigation, discuss and/or take appropriate action where allowed relative to the construction of the Williamsport subdivision. I would like to entertain a motion that since Mr. Frank Humber and Mr. Wayne Hall are not here tonight, that we defer this to the next meeting.
Second.
A first?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, reports for discussion and information, 9.1. As I've said, Mr. Humber is ill this evening, so he is not here. 9.2, city engineer, Will.
Thank you, Chairman. Only thing that I would suggest to you is if you get a chance between now and maybe the next meeting or two, take a look at section, article 8-501 that pertains to the Town Center Overlay Districts and the requirements for those districts. As, as those requests move forward to the Board of Commissioners, I think it'd be pertinent for everyone to familiarize themselves with, with what's required and what's called for in the Town Center. That's all I have.
Thank you.
One question, was that 8.501?
That's correct, 8-501 is the section. Yes, excuse me, in the zoning ordinance, that's where that's found.
Is that all? Okay. 9.3, city engineer, Mr. Cantrell? Sorry, attorney.
I don't.
I guess you're the city engineer tonight as well. I'm sorry. City attorney, Mr. Cantrell?
I don't know if that's a promotion, I was respectful, Will, I would assume it is. They don't make as many jokes about engineers as they do us.
Man, I thought I was going to get through a whole meeting without messing something up.
I'd like to say the explanation of the Williamsport Estates subdivision, I think it's good that, that the board decided to delay that until Mr. Hall and Mr. Humber can be here. I'll have to do this again now, I spent all afternoon getting, getting my stuff together.
And I'm so sorry that you've spent time and gotten it prepared, but I just feel like they're two important factors in this and, you know, they need to be here.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not complaining, I'll just let you know that when you get to the next one, that I'll be the person that will probably be explaining this, but just let me say a couple of things about this, and I'm not going to go into the report. But Mr. Hall and Mr. Humber and I were talking about this, and I've talked with Will about it several times, and, but the reason that they want me to explain this to the planning commission is probably 85% of the stuff, you didn't precipitate the necessity for the report, but the failure of the, the items that are the information that resulted in this investigation was stuff that should have come to this board and didn't. As a matter of fact, the 20 items that Will listed on there as deficiencies, not one of them was zoning. They were all results of failure to follow the subdivision regulations. And with having several new board members, this report, and not so much what I say, though I hope I deliver it in a way that it should be delivered, if I do, it's pretty much a primer for what not to do and what to do for planning commissions. And I don't mind asking, I don't mind, when we're going through this, I don't expect this to be a formal thing, like, you know, to get to court and say, "Your Honor, may I ask this." If you have something, question as we, as we go through this, I'll put this out for you now, feel free to ask it, because it's not going to be a thing. The purpose is not to show you what a wonderful job we did, and they did do a good job. The people that did the report did an excellent job. I don't think Mr. Humber or Mr. Hall is the one who would mind me saying this, I obviously did some investigating on my own, but the reason, I recommended to Mr. Hall, and he recommended to the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Commissioners, thankfully, and I appreciate them doing that, bought off on getting an independent investigation, because any time that you're investigating something that's going on in your own bailiwick, so to speak, it's not good to have someone that's in the bailiwick conducting that investigation. I could have, I could have conducted the investigation and I can assure you, I'd call it down the middle like it is. That's what the, the people that did this did. But having it from the outside, you don't already have somebody saying, "Well, when you have that go?" Because it came from inside the house. And it, has, does everyone have a copy of this report?
That's what I was going to ask. When, when I saw, when I saw this on the agenda, I, that's what I wanted, because there's only three of us who actually were on the planning commission when this happened, and there's a lot of new commissioners now, so if we could get a copy of that.
I'm going to just get it from the recorder, there's a copy filed.
Okay. I would like for, I'll ask her to put that in our packets for this next meeting, because I would like everyone to be able to read over it, no matter how we feel that it went one way or the other. I've written an outline of how I feel like it could not happen, you know, not happen again.
Well, that's one of the things that you, you've already acted on, is requiring two signatures for a plat to be recorded, and the last one's the codes director. The purpose of this will be, though, I'm going to hit the highlights, I'm not going to sit here and insult your intelligence by reading it to you, you can get a copy and read it yourself, but there's some things in there I think need to be pointed out. I have a few things to, to add that I think will be helpful, because these people did an excellent job, but they don't work with planning commissions per se, and, and there's something that, a few things that I've uncovered that doesn't disagree with, with, with their report. I agree with the report in every facet except one, and I'll tell you where I disagree with that, primarily because there has some, there's one thing that has happened that, that is covered in the cases that was not assigned to them, that had an effect on what, basically there's not a whole lot you can do. But I'm not going to get into that now, I'll do it later, but the recorder has, either has it or has access to the copy. If, if she don't, let me know, because I'll be happy to send them another one, and, and we'll get into that at the next, at the next meeting. Put it back on there, there's no, no problem. I just want to make a little joke about, you know, I spent all this time getting prepared, then, then it didn't get to shine, but.
Well, I see that you've got items highlighted on yours.
Mm-hmm.
Those probably are important parts that we need to.
Well, I'm, like I said, I'm not going to read it to you. The reason I highlighted these things was, there's lots of stuff in here that's germane to the investigation that I'll trust to your reading. The, the highlight points that I've got initiated here was, was things that go directly to the issue of, of what should have been done and how it got to a point that it tied to hands of what the city can do. Because the, the Court of Appeals has very succinctly stated, "When you do this, you can't do this." And, and we'll go over that next time, because I don't, I don't want to go over it tonight, and then, then you have a chance to read it, you should have a chance to read it first.
And I, that's, that's how I felt. When I, when I read 8.8, I was like, I felt like it needed to be accompanied by the investigation. So I'll make sure that it's in everyone's packet so that we can all read it and be prepared for the next meeting.
And that's basically all I have. I mean, like I said, I'll, I'm going to be hitting highlights because you don't want to sit here and, and, two things, it's, it's very boring to sit and what, and hear somebody read, because you can read, everybody's had classes where the total thing was, "I'll sit here and read this." I will refer to it, because there's some dates in there and stuff like that, that I want to say in some, some quotes, but we'll go over the highlights, and then you can ask questions as we go, or you can ask them at the end if you've got something that you want to ask. I would prefer to hit the highlights first, and I don't have any problem interrupting and asking the question then. I would rather go over the report, hit the highlights of it, than to have the questions that you have after you read it first. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. 9.4 would be the city manager, Mr. Hall, he's, he's out of town, so I'll skip to 10. Communication from the planning commission members. Mr. Mangram?
I just have one thing that's, that's caught me a little off guard, is apparently you just received that final plat tonight. I think those should always be in our packet to where we, as a board, have time to look those over, as well as give yourself time to review that. And I think in that instance, anytime that happens like this did tonight, I think it should automatically be deferred to the, to the next meeting.
I'd like to comment, I'd like to comment about that. Actually Sharon Hall was going out of town, and the packets got sent out earlier, not the day earlier, but earlier that day than they were supposed to, and Mr. Cavender did not know that. So he brought them in actually the day that they were supposed to go out, and I know that that doesn't help with what happened, but that was the situation.
What happens when you wait to the last minute?
What?
That's what happens when you wait to the last minute, and I'm notorious for it, but.
Go ahead, sorry to interrupt, I just want to clarify that. Is that all?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Sutton?
I just want to thank everybody coming out tonight, and it is a good example of us paying a little bit more attention to something that needs to be approved and going back over again and again to make sure we have a final plat that's in place and corrected at the time that we've submitted to, the two signatures that are required. So hopefully we can keep things from happening in the future that have happened in the past. That's all I've got.
Mr. Butler?
Nothing tonight, Madam Chairman.
I have nothing to say.
Mr. Beata? Mr. Doughty?
I have nothing further.
Mr. Mitchell?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Lowman?
Nothing, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Rowe?
I would just like to say that I appreciate, Mr. Cantrell, that you put together this investigation for us to look at and be able to discuss. I think a lot of people don't really understand what happened. You know, people talk about one thing, talk about another thing, they don't really understand the outcome, how it got there, what happened, what didn't happen, and I'm looking really forward, but wanted Mr. Hall and, and Mr. Humber to be a part of this, and I appreciate you putting it together so that we can discuss this, because I do not want to see this happen in the future.
Just so that everybody's clear, I did some investigating on my own to be sure that I knew what we needed to do. I did not prepare the investigation. The people that did the independent investigation prepared the report. They did send me an early draft copy before they sent it out to the city, which is not uncommon. I did not tell them how to conduct their investigation. They asked for some information, like municipal code stuff and this kind of thing. I provided that, but I, it was not my conclusion, nor did I prepare the thing. I just, anytime I've got something that's being investigated, I'm going to do some on my own, because I don't want to get snowed, and they didn't, they didn't snow me. I mean, they, they did a good job.
Okay, and I didn't mean to imply that you put the investigation together, I mean, you brought it as an agenda item.
Right.
And I think it's, you know, very important that we, we discuss this so that, and it's Williamsport I'm speaking of, so that, you know, it can just be, you know, clarified and, and we can do things differently next time.
Well, I don't think that, that, I agree with you, I don't think that after reading the report, and I'm not going to say, well, I won't say what I was going to say, because I don't want to maybe influence somebody, we'll just cover it at the next meeting.
Okay. Also, I just wanted to mention that Gary's Place is under new ownership, it's called Overtime Grill, right next door in the public shopping center. They've got new staff, new owner, new chef, she's from Florida, she does Creole cooking and did a gumbo today that was fabulous, so I, I hope everybody will, you know, give it a try. They've, they've really worked hard to revamp and make it really a good place to go to. Also, there's one other place I'd like to point out, you know, I think this is kind of a place that gets overlooked, but we have, I guess, a Williams County Health Clinic out here by the high school, and if someone doesn't have insurance or low income, it's a, you know, sometimes those type places have a stigma attached to them, and they shouldn't, because it's a really fabulous facility that we have here in Fairview that could be taken advantage of, and I think a lot of people who need something like that should look into it. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight and all the commissioners being here, and just be safe and have a great month. See you next time.
Motion to adjourn.
Hey, that's my dog.